Having arrived, I'm going to call this meeting of the Wakefield Board of Appeals to order. For Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. The recording will be available on the town's website within the next few days or so. Start with a roll call. Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hadfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Kirsten Brown.
Here.
With that, I'm going to ask the board clerk, Joe Pride, to read the legal notice for the meeting.
Sure thing. Chair. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Meeting ID eight nine three six four six seven five zero six eight passcode two seven 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 four four. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort this meeting. The meeting, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renal, town engineer at seven eight one two two. Two four six six three zero eight as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. Continued hearings. One. Twenty-six dash one, twenty-six dash two, twenty-six dash three, PAC Self-Storage of Wakefield LLC. Application for a special permit pursuant to Article Four, Section one ninety dash twenty-three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw and site plan review in conjunction therewith pursuant to Article Eight, Section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a self-storage facility. Application for a special permit pursuant to Article Six, Section one ninety dash thirty-one M of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow reductions from the requirements of Section one ninety dash thirty-one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw and the setback requirements of Table Two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Application for a special permit pursuant to Article Seven, Section one ninety thirty-six D of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to acquire, to allow reductions in the requirements and or standards of off-street parking and loading on the Article Seven of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown as map zero one lot parcel AM three of the assessors map and is located at fifty Quanapowit. Parkway two. Twenty-six dash four, Robert Bergerin and Susan Bergerin. Application for relief from limitations set forth in the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to the detached accessory dwelling unit, including those regarding setbacks by the, by seeking our special permit and to the extent necessary, site plan review pursuant to Article Four, Section one ninety dash twenty-two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown as map ten lot parcel seventy-seven assessors map and is located at four Oakland Road, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Take a quick look for me and or. Greg. I do not see them. So with that, we'll proceed with our agenda items. First up, there are no continued hearings scheduled for tonight. We'll move right to new hearings, which is the fifty-quart power parkway application. I see Attorney McGrails here. Also see some other folks here just to set expectations for what we're going to do tonight. I'm going to ask the applicant to give a broad overview of what the project is, introduce us to the project. For tonight, we'll take some comments and questions from board members. Then we'll turn it over to public comment. It's our plan as in it's been the board's practice then, and subsequent meetings will take on each major subject matter. Appropriately, like architecture, lighting, landscaping, site civil, all those will happen at subsequent meetings. This meeting, this will take several hearings. We're not going to be in and out tonight for sure. So with that, Mr. McGrail, I'm going to ask you to take it over.
Thank you.
Introduce the project to us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's okay if I share my screen during my presentation.
That's fine. Please do.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Chair, board members attorney Brian McGrail with offices at six oh seven North Avenue Wakefield. On behalf of the applicant, PAC Storage, PAC, PAC Self-Storage of Wakefield LLC, which is the proposed purchaser of the subject property of the applications located at fifty Quanapowit Parkway in Wakefield. I'd like to start by orienting the board, so I'll share my screen. My hunch is you're fairly familiar with this property. At least you will be when you see it on the screen. Fifty Quanapowit Parkway is located at the intersection of North Ave and on Quanapowit Parkway. It's in essence this large green area, which you've become accustomed to when a lot of us recreate and walk around the lake or drive by. The property lines run along the perimeter of the on-ramp on one twenty-eight. They go all the way along North Ave on Quanapowit Parkway and they cut over right around here and then go back all the way to the drive here. This is one hundred Quanapowit Parkway, which is an office building. Across the street is the Lakeside Office Park where the Savings Bank and Hotel are. And then we have the car dealerships on the other side of North Avenue. So, you know, many people have accustomed this to be just a large, open field, field. And, and this is the, the subject property of the applications. If we, if the requested special permits are granted by your board, the plan is for Park Self-Storage of Wakefield LLC to acquire title to the property from the current ownership group known and often referred to as Related Beal. A very highly regarded and full-integrated real estate firm based in Boston that focuses on the development investment opportunities in the region. It's important to note that the Beal family through various entities has had an ownership interest in fifty Quanapowit Parkway since nineteen ninety-one. And as far as the introduction goes, with me tonight is part of our team is Chris Capizoli and Chris Capizoli Jr. from PAC Self-Storage. John Ogrin is our site civil engineer who the board is familiar with. Christine Walsh is with Anemo Incorporated. She is our architect on the project. John Christopher, I think, is on. He's our construction consultant. As I've mentioned, the ownership group Related Beal, very vested into this property, into the process that we've been going through. Mike Tomorrow and Mark Beyondi are here. Mike is a VP at Related Beal and Mark is a senior VP. And also their corporate counsel, Kyle Moynihan and Dan Gunther from Sharon Lodge. And they're the general legal counsel for Related Beal, so they participated in the whole process and I believe that they're on too. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, respecting that this is an introductory meeting, I will handle the entirety of the very, very general presentation without a tremendous amount of detail. As you mentioned, as is the custom with this board, we, my group will expect to make more detailed presentations by subject matter experts at future meetings. As I just mentioned, however, our subject matter experts, Ms. Walsh and Mr. Ogrin are here to answer any questions that the board potentially has tonight, just in case. I think it's appropriate to start with a bit of history as it relates to the property. First off, first of all, Related Beal has been a tremendous and responsible commercial property owner and neighbor in the town of Wakefield for many years. In fact, decades, as I've mentioned, going back to approximately nineteen ninety-one. Notwithstanding the fact that fifty Quanapowit Parkway is a vacant parcel of land, they've continuously meticulously maintained the property, its beautiful cut lawn area for the benefit of the neighborhood and the town as a whole, and all those who often walk by and enjoy the lake. As you know, this is not often the case with property owners. If they have a vacant parcel of land, they let it overgrow. They don't care. They're not, they're not there. Related Beal's been very vested in this community and take great pride. When people call me as their local council in reference that something might be, for example, I got a call probably about four or five months ago that the sidewalk in front of their property had weeds coming out of it. I called them. They were out there in a matter of two days cleaning it for the public to walk by. So they have been tremendous community partners in the town of Wakefield for quite some time. Even to the extent that they've donated the use of the property to local youth groups fundraising, including you. Some of you might recall allowing the carnival, the famous carnival that comes to Wakefield annually to operate there for many years. Notwithstanding the vacant circumstances of the property, it has been anticipated by our community for many years. For a, a community for years that fifty Quanapowit Parkway will eventually be developed. And it was anticipated would either be for a commercial or multifamily residential use. And the owners have determined that the time is now. And they made that known a few years ago. They had a developer who started some permitting process for multifamily housing project here, who I represented. We started that process and then it was during COVID times and that went away. So that, that resulted in some citizen re-interest on this property on what might happen. Because that development was going to have a building and significant parking and probably a parking structure towards Quanapowit Parkway. And so it developed a lot of kind of citizen interest and, you know, gee, what, what potentially could be a, a, a good use here? And that resulted at the annual town meeting in two thousand twenty-four that the citizens of Wakefield, the legislative body of our town, recognizing the significant public benefits by what I would call an unprecedented vote of three hundred twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Ninety-two percent voted to amend the zoning bylaw to allow self-storage facilities in certain areas of town and specifically including the fifty Quanapowit Parkway property is one of those areas. This matter was robustly discussed at that town meeting. When compared to other development possi- possibilities for fifty Quanapowit Parkway, as I mentioned, such as multifamily housing or other types of high-density, high-traffic developments, a self, self-storage facility was deemed appropriate in a win situation for various stakeholders, including the town as a whole, the Friends of Lake Quanapowit, which have been very involved in this process and the residents of Wakefield in general. Respectfully, I look at that town meeting vote of this magnitude, ninety-two percent, three twenty-seven to twenty-eight is somewhat of a mandate mandated use for the fifty Quanapowit Parkway. And when you look at it, it makes sense. It makes sense for the town for the following reasons. As an alternative to other development options, self-storage facility will result in an extremely low-impact development of the property with significant benefits for the town. For example, the traffic generated by a self-storage facility compared to some of the other uses that I talked about is extremely low. This is common knowledge and the board has direct evidence of this from other existing self-storage facilities in town of Wakefield that you've permitted and that currently exist, for example, on Water Street near Shalmar. There, there would be minimal light and signage impacts from a self-storage facility type project. Extremely no, low number of parking spaces required, which results in a limited amount of pavement that would be required for a self-storage facility. Tax base will be generated and very positive during the process. There were discussions with the assessor. I believe the property currently generates approximately fifty-three thousand dollars a year's vacant land. It's anticipated to be approximately two hundred thousand or more once fully developed. And that is coupled by the fact that a self-storage facility has very little or virtually no impact on demand for public services, unlike some of the other projects that you permit. For example, there's no real demand for police at a public facility, a public storage facility or fire, state-of-the-yacht building with all fire suppression and alarms. And we've confirmed that through the process with both the fire chief and the police chief. And also certainly no impact on our school systems because there's no, no generated schoolchildren in a self-storage facility. So all of the tax revenue generated is all for the positive with no negative deductions. No, no real stress on what public demands on public services. Also, in this area, there's a need for a, a stored facility of this nature. You know, you've permitted a number of residential developments. You have the forty B on North Ave, which is almost done. You've got the two other residential units on North Ave and in the other, the project at two hundred, four hundred, which is almost completed. Well, you know, those, those developments generate a need for storage. So it's really a good combined use on this site and will generate the opportunity to address a need. Also, there's a commitment that a significant portion of the property, not needed for the self-storage facility, would never be built upon and contain landscaping and plantings with opportunities for public open space and restrictions against any future development of that portion of the property that will be in perpetuity. As you'll see from the site plan and landscaping plan that we're going to present, there's a, there's a tremendous opportunity and this is a huge benefit for the town that was discussed by a number of stakeholders in town on, on how this could be, you know, one of the major benefits for the town. Furthermore, through this, the discussions process, my client made a commitment to design the project with an attractive-looking building that quite frankly doesn't look like a self-storage facility, as you'll see, with an abundance of open spaces, I mentioned, for the benefit of the town, its residents and the thousands of people that enjoy Lake Quanapowit on a daily basis. And I think what you'll see is what has been submitted clearly lives up to that commitment. Finally, we're, we're proud to have worked with the board of directors of the Friends of Lake Quanapowit through the entire process, including the design. We've had multiple meetings with them throughout the process. With that said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share the site plan.
Yep, please do.
So this is a site plan that was submitted, but it's been just kind of colored up a little bit. You just blow it up. So this was part of our submittal. It's just been colored up. And, you know, as I go through this, I think you'll see, I'm going to illustrate the low-impact features that I spoke about a few minutes ago. You can see that we put the, we were putting the building towards the rear of the property. And this, this was through discussions with the Friends of Lake Quanapowit. There was, was designed that the building be located toward the rear of the property closer to one twenty-eight and away from Quanapowit Parkway and Lake Quanapowit. That keeps this open area that everybody's become very accustomed to. As I mentioned, a field that will stay intact and actually be improved significantly as you'll see as I go through the presentation. The building footprint you can see compared to the site is relatively small. It leaves a significant amount of open space where public use where, where, where the public is used to seeing it, as I've mentioned. The building coverage is only twelve percent of the entire site. Eighty-three percent of the site remains as open space on this development proposal. You'll see that the access and drive are off of our property. One hundred Quanapowit Parkway are our neighbors. This is fifty Quanapowit Parkway. They, along with two hundred, four hundred Quanapowit Parkway, were all held in common ownership at one time. And they were, were divided. And when these two, when one hundred and fifty were divided, there was an easement agreement that fifty Quanapowit has an access easement agreement over a portion of the one hundred Quanapowit Parkway property, which has their driveway. This is one of the driveways for one hundred going in. And our, our plan is within that access easement and within our rights of the access agreement is to connect to that with one-way traffic leading into our property and then an exclusive exit one way out. As I mentioned, the applicant is committing that a significant area of the property not needed for the self-storage facility would never be built upon. Would be restricted forever. So that, you know, that we would put a commitment that when, you know, no one's going to come back in two years and say, I'm going to subdivide this property and now try to build over here. So this is one of the intriguing, tremendous public benefits for the town, that there's a lock-in that this property will never be developed in the future. It will remain an open area. And that area will contain, as I've mentioned, landscaping, plantings. It's going to be an opportunity for public open space and access. And, you know, a higher-impact development, as I've mentioned, with multifamily, which was a true vision for this site. And I think a lot of people thought that would, is what would end up here. It was kind of the obvious. You wouldn't have this type of open area. You would end up with probably a parking structure here servicing the building or it would be flipped around. But there's no way that this property will be remained in its current state. If, if a different type of proposal or project or use was going to go here. As you'll see, the layout with the site plan, the parking area does not face any of the neighbors. And it doesn't face the lake or Quanapowit Parkway. So you'll see on the architectural plans when I go through them, there are three loading bays here with doors. And those face, in essence, North Ave and the, and the one twenty-eight on-ramp. And it's important to note, the way my client has significant experience in this industry and the way they've designed it is all loading and unloading will take, actually take place inside the building. So it's not like cars are going to be in the parking lot unloading stuff or trucks are going to be out in the parking lot unloading stuff. The bays are not, are big enough that everything will, it will transpire inside the building. So I mentioned this area where, where we plan on having some improvements. I'm going to now share the landscaping plan, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So this is the landscaping plan. We, we're adding, what we've done is we've got some, you know, this will certainly be a topic of discussion for the board. But just from thirty thousand feet, we've added some landscaping over here for our neighbor. We've also put some landscaping on our building, but kind of the focus is this open area space here. You know, this is what we believe will be the restricted area that your board will put a restriction on this area to prevent development and to prevent, and to allow some public access. So what we're doing here is we're creating a walkway. We're creating some, some benches for people to see, sit, and we're adding a good amount of landscaping. We'll get into detail on this, but what is being proposed are sixteen trees, twenty-six evergreens, seventy-one shrubs and five benches. And so this area is really gonna, you know, be an enhancement to the lake and the area because it's not just going to be, you know, not that the cut lawn isn't nice, but now it's really going to kind of be enhanced to, you know, have kind of a pocket park feel for people that are walking the lake. And as I mentioned, there's a commitment to restrict this to any future development, the significant portion of property that is not needed for the self-storage facility use, which is really kind of, as I've mentioned, isolated to this area of the lot. I'd like to briefly get into the architecturals on the fut, pattern on that. So I'm not going to go through these in detail every sheet. This will be appropriate for Christine to handle that, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to break a promise to the board that I'm going to do this at a high level and then, and then get into detail. But in any event, our architect Christine Walsh was charged in this process. And, you know, this was discussions that we had with the board of directors of the Friends of the Lake with designing a self-storage facility unlike any other she has designed before. She was kind of mystified by the assignment and, you know, what I would call it, I would call it a Jim McBane-type of storage facility. Meaning that it's a self-storage facility that no one would recognize as such. So it's not your typical orange building that, you know, cries out, here I am, U-Haul or whatever it is, you know, self-storage. The goal was to make this building look like something that I have no idea it's a self-storage. It could be an office. It could be a library. It could be anything. And I think after a lot of time and effort, I respectfully suggest that Christine did a very nice job on this. And as always, I know the board has input and we welcome that. But I think we've got a very good starting point. Again, I'm not going to get into the details of this. This is just a layout of the, of the units. But I'm going to go right to, you can see my screen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not even going to go to, they're kind of the, the, the drawings, the details. That will be for Christine at a future meeting. And this just kind of is the color of it, but there are some renderings at the end. I do want to point this out. This is the side of the building where I mentioned the loading is, where the parking. So these are the two higher doors that people can get right in to do the unloading and up, unloading. And this would be for, you know, a box truck that needs to back up with a, you know, with a, a kind of a loading dock, if you will. And Christine, you know, she knows what the board wants. She's got lighting. She's got all the materials, which we'll go over in detail at a future meeting. But these are the renderings. So this is, this is the rendering. If you're coming from North Avenue, you, you're coming down North Ave from Wakefield. You take a right on Quanapowit Parkway. So this is looking left at the building. And you'll see this is the walkway that we're talking about, the proposing, the benches and, and trees that will be there. So that is that rendering. And, you know, I don't think anyone can say this looks like a self-storage facility. This is the other angle. If you're coming from the lake, heading towards North Ave. And this is helpful because this kind of places it. You'll see that, you know, this is, this is, you know, the open area, the walkway. This is how the building is really set back from the lake towards one twenty-eight. It's even, if you look at it, it does not align with one hundred Quanapowit Parkway. Their building faces out. It aligns with their back addition or their back portion of the building that comes off on the other side of the parking lot. But it really shows you how a development of this nature, what is so intriguing about this to the citizenry, citizenry of Wakefield, the opportunity that this presents to have such a lack of impact on environment, open space and at the same time, putting a vacant piece of parcel property to a good tax use with very limited impacts on infrastructure and other aspects that I've already mentioned. So that's the bird's eye view. And then this is just a view if you're kind of on the on-ramp to one twenty-eight. You can see one hundred Quanapowit in the background and this is our property. So I, I also want to point out that the plan is to have solar on the roof that you will not be able to see that will hopefully power the majority of the building. There's a great opportunity for solar here and my, and my client wants to do that. I do want to mention to the board that we, our Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over this project as well. So I believe Mr. Ogrin recently filed in the past couple of days a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We anticipate, anticipate being before them sometime in early August. So, so you know, when people that are listening know that that, that process has been filed and we expect to be there in August. So they do have concurrent jurisdiction with your board on this project. You might take note that we have not submitted a traffic study. We don't believe one is necessary for a project of this nature. Certainly that's up for your board to determine, not us. But we did not want to do one without that direction from you historically. I don't think you've required it. I don't show any record of one being done for the project on Water Street, which was about a hundred and twelve thousand square foot storage facility. This is about one twenty-five. And Water Street's a much busier street. But that's up for you, that's up for discussion with your board. You can give us direction on that, Mr. Chair, perhaps before the end of the meeting tonight, so we know what we need to do on that, if anything. So as I promised, I would be kind of short and sweet. I hope that kind of. So as I promised, I would be kind of short and sweet. I hope that kind of sets the table for what's before your board. We've got three applications, which we'll obviously get into the details of those as the as we proceed. But with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions. And as mentioned, Ms. Walsh and Mr. Ogrin here as well, if there's any specific detailed questions of them. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to bring anything back up on the screen that board members need.
Yeah, if you could stop sharing this like, let's see. Just for board members, in terms of correspondence from town departments, the DPW is working on something between vacations and stuff. They'll have that for the August meeting. There's nothing really to discuss tonight anyway, because we're not getting into it. There's correspondence dated July third from Fire Chief Sullivan. It's fairly lengthy, but tell you the truth, it's all code stuff. It's not really under things that fall under our jurisdiction. And as you heard, Mr. McGrath, it's also before the Conservation Commission. So they have not submitted anything as of yet. So obviously, we're at the very beginning of this process and we'll be hearing from the appropriate subject matter experts from our town departments in the next couple of meetings. So with that, I will then open it up to board members. I saw Kasumi's hand up first. So Kasumi, go ahead.
I have a general questions. Are you, so is that people who's gonna be using this storage unit, they have to make appointment to come in because all the unloading and loading is gonna be happening inside and you only have three bays of loading area?
Yeah, so I'm gonna let Chris, Chris Senior, could you unmute and answer that question? How that works?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
If you could just for the record, introduce yourself, give your company address, that type of material for the public record, please.
Sure. Chris Kappa's always senior pack self-storage address 114 West Street in Wilmington, Mass. Oh, one eight eight seven. To answer the question, no, it would be similar to a typical self-storage facility where you would have like a keypad outside. The overhead doors would be open or accessible during certain hours. It's not going to be 24 hours. But basically, the overhead door could open up, you could pull inside, load, unload, and then just leave accordingly. The door will close behind you. So it's it's typical access that self-storage gives.
Okay, so if somebody is already in there, you just have to wait for that person to leave?
Yeah, the size of the doors are big enough that you can probably, it looks like you can fit at least, well, obviously at least two, but probably even three, like regular cars can just pull in there and pull right out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like during, even during good days or nice weather days, the doors could even stay open. Again, it's hidden inside. You won't see anything, but they could just pull right inside, go inside the building and leave.
Okay, thank you. Another question is, are you already looking at like HVAC system things like if anything goes on the rooftop unit that you can see because it doesn't look like you have parapet on the top?
We haven't, we haven't gotten into the finite details yet of HVAC in this building on on the best way to make this work. If there are rooftop units on there, obviously they will, you know, we're going to try to hide them as as best as possible, but especially with the land area being so tight. So the thought is with our solar up there and if we can hide some small units up there. I mean, these things don't take a lot of heating and cooling because you're not doing real true environmental temperature. You're doing, you know, anywhere from say sixty to sixty-five degrees in the winter and seventy-five, seventy-eight degrees in the summer. So you know, the tonnage isn't as big as regular office space. So you'll, you know, the the units will be small, but we haven't got into those details yet of design.
Okay, I just wanna.
Yeah, and Christine will be able to talk about that a little bit more when we get into architecture too.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure because you already have like renderings of how the building looks like. So I don't want, I don't think we want to have any surprise like the all of a sudden there's a huge rooftop unit showing up on the roof.
Agreed.
That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kasumi. Dave saw your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, thanks for the initial presentation. My initial impressions are positive. I like the look of the building. I like the way it's placed on the site. I like the opportunity to activate other parts of the site. So I appreciate what the team's done so far to to come up with this initial design and we'll get into the details and see how things go from there. But I appreciate the initial thought and layout so far. I was, one of my notes already, and I was thinking was solar panels. I didn't see them on the plan. I may have missed the notation, but happy to hear that the team's looking at that already because I think the other one on Water Street came back after the fact. So I, you know, there was certainly an opportunity to do it. So I'm happy to hear the teams considering that right off the the top and worked it into the plan. And again, just for future meetings, want to make sure we tease out, you know, the the specific relief that the team is looking for as part of this project. I know we'll get there. But for the benefit of the public, you know, there's multiple applications for parking and and setbacks and that kind of thing. So we'll get into it when we get into the site plan reviews and and so forth. But you know, we just want to make sure we we cover that when we get into the details. But that those are my initial comments so far. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, real quick, on the site plan, this lot, did you mention this lot parcel two in the back? Is that separated by a fence? Is that what you were talking about that that you can't be used in future?
Let me, can I repeat again, Mr. Chair? Is that okay?
Please do.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Joe, you're talking about this this chain link fence here?
Yeah, that's part of your property or?
No, so our property is this entire green. The reason is the delineation is this property is part of the property is registered land and part of it is recorded land. So what that means is in Massachusetts is two forms of ownership of land, registered and recorded. And in registered is like a superior form of ownership. It's gone before a land court judge. It's been almost certified the title. So the this portion here is all registered upfront with the building and parcel two is recorded. That's all that is, Joe, but it's all our land. It's all part of the project. So what we're anticipating in in all fairness, a good, you know, a part of about, I think it's about thirty-nine percent of the lot out back is wetlands. And that can't be developed anyways. So you know, you know, we can restrict it, but there's no, you know, that we'd be, you know, embellishing and say, oh, there's a big benefit to restrict that. The real benefit of this, real benefit of restriction, what we're talking about is up in this area. If you can see kind of this this rectangle area. The grassy area.
Are you putting that fence there just to keep people from walking from one twenty-eight over?
John, John Ogrin, can you identify yourself and answer that question?
Hey, good evening, John Ogrin, Hayes Engineering. Yeah, I'm not sure whether that fence was put up. You know, typically the the state puts up a fence between the highway and the budding properties. I don't know if that that was the source of that fence. And I'm not sure why they followed that registration line the way they did.
I I thought you were gonna put that fence in. I didn't even realize it was already a fence.
Already there, yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah, no, I I agree with it.
The restricted area is kind of this along this fence line and then here because the the edge of the wetlands, it comes out here, you can see it. So again, about, I think John calculated it like, you know, thirty-nine, John, it's about thirty-nine percent of our lot is wetlands.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the real benefit of the restricted area for the citizenry for the town is going to be where the path is and where where the landscaping is going to go.
All right. Thanks. And I, my other comment was I actually had written in my notes that I was going to bring up the fact that the town did overwhelmingly vote for this. So I was on board for it from it, you know, from the start. But I, the only thing I could think about when I'm looking at this plan is any any problems with water in that area? Are you going to have groundwater issues? Do you have to raise the building? You have seen any reason to think you might have to raise the building at all?
Well, I think, you know, that's part about our our stormwater report, which is going to be reviewed by the town engineer.
Yeah.
And we'll get into that in detail and how we're going to deal with that at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
And so Conservation is going to look at that too, Joe.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Hey, thanks, Joe. Chip, see you here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, getting back to your question that you posed to us earlier regarding a TAC or traffic, I'm fine not having one. I think it's minimal use. And I don't see there's any point in going through the cost or I don't think there's any benefit to that. I am appreciative of the architectural design. It's pretty similar to exactly what was shown at us at town meeting. So I'm looking forward to presentations down the road where we can get more into the meat of the subject matter.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Chip on the traffic. I don't see the need as well. If we're gonna, if the client's looking for sort of a direction, I would agree with you.
No, I'm already, I was there too because of our experience on Water Street and then although we just a couple out on Autamon Road. So we we know what's happening at these facilities. I'm comfortable with that as well.
Pretty low impact. Yep.
Yep.
Any else, anybody else on the board? Now, I'll just add that this is a good opening presentation, Mr. McGrath. Appreciate the sighting of the massing. And I appreciate that if this does reach a resolution, that this will be a final plan for that site with those restrictions on further development, that once and for all, we'll know what's going to happen along Quanapaw Parkway. It's also very pleased to hear that the Friends of Lake Quanapaw have been involved all along. They were very, very, their input and in work on the two hundred to four hundred CCNF project gave a lot of help to this board as well. So I appreciate with that and what they've been doing. And I'm glad to hear that they're involved. So if no one else on the board has anything else, I am now going to turn it open to public hearing. So anyone else from the board? No, and I'm going to turn it right over to Bill Boudry from Friends of Lake Quanapaw. Mr. Boudry.
Chairman, thank you. My name is Bill Boudry. I live at twenty-five White Circle. I'm speaking to you tonight as the president and a representative of the Board of Directors at the Friends Lake Quanapaw. What I'm going to do is give you some excerpts. As Brian has mentioned, he came to us very early in this process, got feedback from us. Our board went through a rigorous process of discussing the merits of the proposed zoning amendment at the time. And you know, we voted unanimously to support the project. So would I, if you don't mind, just to take a couple of minutes, I'd like to again, just pull some excerpts when I presented or spoke on behalf of Friends of Lake Quanapaw at the town meeting, which passed the zoning amendment. And so I said, the mission of Friends of Lake Quanapaw is to promote awareness and provide long-term protection and enhancement of Lake Quanapaw and its surrounding public lands. The Friends of Lake Quanapaw considered the options for the site and the board that's before you tonight, and the Board of Directors voted unanimously to support the zoning bylaw as brought forward and and was adopted at the town meeting. Just a few specific bullet points for us. They tilted us that way. The self-storage building proposal that you're looking at will limit the scale of development, set aside open green space for public use and significantly reduce traffic and parking as opposed to other possible options for development of the site. The amendment as passed by town meeting significantly minimizes the development impact to the lake and its area. Over four acres of maintained and enhanced precious green space will remain and result as part of the development. And that that's key. It's important to note at the town meeting and the article did not in any way compromise the detailed project review and process that is before you, the process starting before you, and of course, will go before the Conservation Commission. We certainly consider you the subject matter experts. But for those reasons, as I mentioned on top, it was unanimous decision of the Friends of Lake Quanapaw Board to endorse this project. I appreciate you allowing me to give you that feedback.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And thank you for all your work you do for behalf of the lake and the town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the input. It means a lot. I know most board members, it means a lot to them to hear what you're thinking. So next up, I see a Sean S. as their hand up.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sean Smith. I'm Senior Vice President of Development for RJ Kelly Company. And I'm here representing one hundred Q owner, the immediate butter to the north northeast, along with Ian Pickrell in our office. We've we've voiced some concerns regarding the application we've had. Meetings after the fact of certain filings affecting our parcel, which we found somewhat surprising that portions of our land were rezoned without conversation prior to this application before you tonight. We have some concerns that this project in particular, as proposed, will not meet all of the criteria required for the granting of a special permit, specifically items five and six, which I'm can enumerate for you, or I can leave it to the board to read on their own. From a standpoint of not being detrimental to the public welfare and will not impair the integrity or character of the district as enumerated in item five, we strongly disagree that this project will be of benefit to this immediate neighborhood. In particular, the massing of this building will cast a deep shadow from what we have seen during certain portions of the year on our building. Mr. Pickrell has letters in hand from tenants and have heard concerns from tenants in an office environment that is already constrained and challenged in a post-COVID environment. And so the tax base is questionable that it will cover the loss in tenancy that we expect and have researched in other locations that Mr. Pickrell can voice in a few minutes. Should the board like to hear some of the research we've done. And I'd like to underscore as well that RJ Kelly has been developing self-storage in New England for easily thirty years. We've been a neighbor here for well over ten. Had we believed that this parcel was suited for a self-storage development, we likely would have pursued it on our own. So aside from zoning concerns related to the parking requirements presented to the town during that initial rezoning zoning overlay hearing where it states very clearly that twelve parking spaces should be required. We believe that there should be room made for twelve parking spaces. We had a similar site facility we constructed directly next to the Quincy Adams T Station that had twenty-eight for reference. The safety concerns we have, we don't believe that for a five-story self-storage facility that may require ladder truck access to multiple sides of the building where we've been required to do so in many locations, we believe there's a safety concern being able to access those portions of the building as the site is laid out. Should the site integrate full circulation, we would remove those concerns, especially given how near it is to our building at one hundred Quanapaw. As a professional engineer myself, who's practiced here for fifteen years, I do have some concerns with the stormwater. Namely, I don't see certain portions of impervious cover being adequately addressed for water quality. The wetland soil conditions, I'm not sure. This is a question. I don't know if they've been reviewed by a third party. I don't believe this has gone through an ad read process. But the, if you walk out there even today with as hot as it's been, the soil will still squish under your feet. And this is certainly evidenced by certain areas of the report that show that groundwater is pouring into test pits performed at two feet below the surface. So to say that we have an estimated seasonally high groundwater that is high enough to meet MASTIUP standards is a massive question in my in my mind among certain other factors that I don't have to go into since this is going to be before Conservation anyway. Most of this building is also located within your one hundred foot buffer to your wetland system, which is a direct tributary. Direct tributary to Lake Quanapaw. Portions of this building interfere with your twenty-five foot no build. At least on an overhang and portions of the site also interfere with your twenty-five foot no build. If we are going to hold others to a standard of not being able to build within a twenty- to build within a twenty-five-foot setback to a wetland, especially a wetland directly tributary to one of the treasures of this town, I believe we really need to look more closely at the size of this building, the size of the footprint, and the massing. And if we can go back in time to certain agreements that we have in place, because we were fully cooperative with the two hundred Quanapawat residential development. We believe that was a a great addition to the town. This, we believe, will detract from our ability, based on our tenant feedback and from our research uh to lease our building at one hundred Quanapawat. And if you look at some of the easements in place, they speak to a thirty thousand square foot building in this location. So there's also a question of legality that we are, we have in our mind that we are not totally sure. Uh, they have rights to even pursue a hundred thousand square foot plus storage facility. Um, Ian, can you?
So Sean, Sean?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I really do wanna hear what you have to say. But I'd really, if you could keep it to what's before this board, like, and as you talk about fire safety, we're gonna lean on our fire chief, and they've already put in a letter. And I'll ask him to look at it again. In terms of the legality of what you think is a thirty thousand square foot, that's not before this board either. So I, I gotta ask you to really focus on the special permit criteria. You, you, you talked about the town meeting. Well, that, that vote occurred. The zoning was certified by the Attorney General, and it's now part of our bylaw. So this isn't the form for that either. And so what's before us is a very specific set of criteria related to special permits. And I, I, I'm not trying to shut you down. You're in the butter. I, you have concerns. I, I do wanna hear them. But I, I don't wanna waste all our time talking about things that are outside the purview of this board. Um, some of those you might wanna take up with town council, the fire chief, whatever, but uh it's not appropriate for this board. So uh, I know that can be frustrating, but we can't help you with that. So I don't I don't wanna lead, let you believe that we're gonna go down that road when that's not the case. So I just wanna set expectations. That's all.
That's, that's completely fair, Mr. Chairman. It's fully expected. This is all speaking to the, the, the second point that I have, if you'd allow me to.
Yeah, go ahead. Like I said, we do wanna hear what you have to say.
So uh in speaking, and if I can clarify one of my points, I am not trying to go back and change any sort of rezoning that has occurred. That is not what we're here for. However, during that rezoning process, it was stated that you need twelve parking spaces, and part of your variance application is reduce the requirement from what was stated that would be required during that process. So I wanna make that clear. The, when I speak to size of building, right, um, massing of building, the overarching concept is that this is too much building for the location in which it's being built. It will be detrimental to our process of, which is detrimental to the integrity of the neighborhood. And item six speaks to an excess of a particular use in an area. We aren't arguing that self-storage by its nature in totality will be a horrible use. What we are arguing is that this is an excessive application of that use in this location. And so going back to the thirty thousand as considered for this parcel, we believe that's important piece of information for the board to consider when this parcel was cut, how it was applied, and how it was communicated to us, or not communicated to us. Um, and so that, that's it. Thank you for allowing me to clarify. Um, and, and Ian can speak a little bit to some of the information we have to um support uh a rejection of item number five, Ian.
Yep, if I may, and good evening, everyone. Uh, on the board, uh, Ian Pickrell is previously introduced by Sean Smith, a colleague with Sean at RJ Kelly Company and uh a uh highly involved person in the one hundred Q uh property. Um, with respect to Sean's um, you know, previous statement regarding uh regarding the nature of both the neighborhood and impacts of both the general welfare as well as um as well as uh environment of the nature of the property, we do and have noted in several instances impacts of self-storage development and the addition of said self-storage facility to neighboring office buildings, looking no further than uh Burlington Massachusetts Storage Base and the Blanchard Properties, where there's been a sizable uh uptick in both vacancy rates and reducing uh reduction, excuse me, and asking rents within that uh complex relative to the rest of Burlington and relative to uh other factors in the market that others are facing as well. So we know firsthand um from seeing it, you know, truly in our backyard, the ramifications that the addition of a, you know, facility such as this can have on neighboring office buildings such as ours. Um, to speak to Sean's point as it relates to, you know, the aforementioned property uh at one hundred Q, we have had conversations uh with existing tenants, some of which have been tenants of the building for uh over decades and continue to um call that their home or corporate headquarters, whether that be groups at a large scale such as Vestmark, groups at a midsize scale such as Sentinel, long-term tenants who have enjoyed the building and occupied uh therefore, you know, multiple, multiple lease terms, opting to renew their location in place, and because they've enjoyed the nature and the atmosphere of what the building has provided, those employees unobstructed views of the lake, tranquil atmosphere, things that can lay the addition of a uh five-storage vertical building directly next to them would no longer be viable for them and certainly no longer selling point for that specific location, both to current employees as well as future employees, all while keeping in mind the impact of uh COVID nineteen and what led to multiple multiple large-scale employers navigating the ramifications of a hybrid work environment, in some cases a, you know, fully remote work environment. It, it feels to us and as communicated by them, adding a structure such as this, which, you know, has a direct impact both in the visibility and the nature of the park is inevitably going to be detrimental to them. And it, I think, very fair to say that, you know, had um those plans been known about on their end, that there would have been serious discussions about their long-term viability at one hundred Quanapawat. Uh, that's sort of the, you know, kind of, you know, the nature, nature of, of, of our concerns, and also speaking on behalf of direct correspondence with those in our tenant base as well.
So it would be helpful if we could, uh, we could see the correspondence from your tenants, though. But if you could also just focus your comments a little bit more, Ian, on what's really happening here. You know, to say that this building's gonna block a view from the lake when the buildings, the proposed building is actually behind your building, this building is, this proposed building would not block a view to Lake Quanapawat from any one of your tenants. So again, I get your concerns, but if you could really just stay focused and, and talk about real impacts associated with the criteria that this board looks at to adjudicate these special permits, right? That, that's what we're interested in, and we're laser-focused on that. And um, you know, but so if you have comments on the massing, the architecture, we're happy to hear that.
Understood.
We always take input from the board, but let, let's be real about what you're talking about, too, okay? Let's, let's not kind of wander into hyperbole uh, cuz it, it I'm already having a tiny bit of problem from a a company that does these self-storage units telling me that a self-storage unit next to them is gonna have a very detrimental impact. Uh, that, that's a little bit fascinating to me. I, I, I have to admit. So let's, let, let's stick to the criteria before the special permit, because as a board, we have a history of working with butters and trying to address their concerns as we take a project through the process. That's all, okay? Sean, I don't wanna kind of?
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna belabor this point. I think what I would like to do now is just wrap it up. I know, I know this is an introductory meeting. I think we voiced our concerns to you. Um, I believe there's a lot more to be done, right? Um, there's a lot more process to happen, and a lot more process that, that we can bring our concerns to. Uh, at the end of the day, you know, we've, we believe that items five and six of your special permit criteria are not met. I think we voiced, voiced our concerns related to that. Um, I did have a couple of questions, just wrap-up questions. Um, one of them being, I did not see, I noticed that this is an application for um, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, this is an application for a setback variance. Is that, is that accurate as well as a parking variance? Could somebody correct me?
You wanna talk about the relief you're seeking?
Yeah, so.
I just, I just didn't see a setback plan. That's, that's all.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, so um, the relief that we're seeking is a, well, first of all, just um, it, it is a big deal. You know, you're referring to it as a variance. There are no variance requests here. There's no applications for there's applications for special permit. Special permits, which are certainly is um a much different standard than variances. So we're seeking a, a, a special permit um for some relief on the parking requirements, um, which allows for that if standards are met and reasoning is met, and that will be looked at, I would assume, by the board in detail. So you don't have to meet the parking that's required by the bylaw. There's an opportunity for relief to be granted by the board if they so determine that the standards are met for that. Um, and as far as a, a, a setback, there's a setback um special permit request because of the odd shape of the lot. Um, it is not a, a setback, um, Sean, that uh but your building, if you will.
So it's, it, but it's still a setback, a special permit related to a setback.
Correct, Sean. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, my sec, my second question, and this will be my last one, and, and allow the board to move on with its business um until next time. Um, I remember seeing um in some of the materials I reviewed after the fact for the rezoning or the zoning um overlay that there was a stream defined, and it does not appear to be any longer on the plan. Are there, is there a stream? Was there a stream study completed um on the, on the northern side of the, of the parcel shared with, with our boundary? I'm just wondering what happened to that.
Might be a question for the Conservation Commission.
Fifty-foot setback associated with that.
Might be a question for the Conservation Commission.
Right, it, so you, Attorney McGrail, you hear the question at some point, if you could get back in the process to that, and whether that's, you know, I, to Dave's point, I think it's a Conservation Commission type of question. So uh, uh, I'm sure that Sean and Ian will be uh following the, the process at the Conservation Commission as well.
Yes, and I just wanna highlight, I'm asking these questions because it speaks to development envelope, which speaks to the question of being an excessive development as opposed to an appropriate.
I totally get it. Note, note would be helpful in the future. You have some very specific stuff which is helpful, and some of the stuff wasn't, but some of it was specific and helpful. If you could put it in writing to the board on the Friday before our next hearing, our board members will read it over the weekend and before the hearing. And that would really be helpful to the board, as opposed to trying to react in real time as you go over these. If you can't do it, that's fine. It's just a suggestion I'm giving you. Um, but our board members do do their homework, so.
Okay. Uh, well, I respect this board a lot. We're, we're happy to be a part of this community. Um, we believe in doing what's best for the community, and we just don't believe that this is what's best in this, in this instance. So I appreciate the time. Um, we'll let you get back to your business. Um, and we'll see you next time.
Yep. All right. Is there any other member of the public that would like to testify on this application? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Going once, twice. Okay, I see Austin Hunt. Austin, if you could come on screen and identify yourself, give your address.
Um, yeah, I'm a resident at uh ten fourteen Main Street um in Wakefield. I was kind of focused on this just because it seems like I, I, I'd love to hear more of um kind of the support from uh the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, cuz it does seem like the scale of this is a little off, just given, you know, it's a pretty uh, most of the, the buildings around there are pretty low, so you know, uh, I, I know these guys are speaking to like envelope and scale, but um, it just seems like putting a building of this size there just, just feels uh not ideal. So, you know, if there's a way to, to shrink it without having to go for these special permits, that that'd make a lot more sense. So I just wanted to kind of hear what, what the thought process was there to, to get to this point.
Yeah, this is a, this is a, you can ask us questions. You, you know, the Friends of Lake Quanapawat are not taking questions, so. But what we can do, I hear your point on context in terms of size. And what this board generally does is we ask for the heights of the building all around it, so we can understand as a board how this fits in. So that, we'll certainly do that here. And uh Attorney McGrail's been before this board many times. I'm sure he's already thought of that. So um, when we get to architecture and future meetings, when we discuss masking and architecture, we can certainly discuss that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate your attendance. Anybody else? Going once, twice. Okay, closing public comment for the evening. Back to the board. Pleasure of the board. I have a few notes, but if folks wanna uh hammer home a point or ask the uh development team on the, for the applicant for anything specific, I have you know, a shadow study was mentioned, uh, Attorney McGrail. You, you've heard the questions about height. So if you have those available and the height of the surrounding building, some context, um, that would be helpful. Um, other board members, is there anything else that you'd like to? You know, cuz I think the plan will be at the next meeting in August is architectural massing kind of site plan stuff. Um, that's my thoughts. I'm, I'm interested to hear feedback from the board.
Mr. Chair, I would agree. My only ask in addition is uh through you, um, um, Mr. McGrail, can we get copy, electronic copies of the plans, please?
Yes.
Just in addition to the paper we got, you know, with the application, just to be hopeful. I sometimes like to look at them online and I'm throwing.
And I'll submit the color one for the record also.
Yep, appreciate it. So as soon as they, then we can have those at our disposal for the next meeting. Thank you.
And we've heard from several board members, uh, Mr. McGrail, that I don't think anyone's taken for a, a traffic study here. Uh, board members, if you disagree, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Yeah, no.
Okay. But yeah, I, we've, we have experience with these. I, I don't think, so what, what, I think we're good with that. Chip?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you wanna, are you thinking architectural? So my question is, I personally love to do site and layout and address the issues of the conservation boundaries and things that were brought up today before we get a whole lot into architecture. Because if the massing has to change based on some of the things we heard today, true or not, um, I don't wanna go backwards. So I'm curious to know when the town uh, when Mr. McGrail, Attorney McGrail feels that we'll know like if the notice of intent's just gone out, when do they think they'll do the flagging? When do we think we'll have a, a plan that has the hundred and twenty-five-foot setbacks for Concom on that plan and on that site? Um, and then the architecture of the height, the massing and all that. I just, I don't wanna go backwards if, if it makes any sense, in my opinion.
No, I, I hear you on that. And so Attorney McGrail, what, what's your sense of that?
Well, I, uh, if I can ask you, John, um, a, a couple of things, if I can through you, Mr. Chair. So we, we've had, we've had uh open discussions with the folks at RJ Kelly. Um, and um and just through you, so Sean knows, um, we would, Sean, I will be sending you guys the filing with Conservation Christian, so you don't have to track it down. I'm gonna send that to Brandon tomorrow morning um to save you the time and aggravation on that. And um I believe, uh, if I can ask you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Ogrin, John, do you know what our date is at Conservation yet?
Um, yeah, we're scheduled for the August fifth.
So that will be before your next meeting. Um, yeah, have our initial meeting with Conservation. Um, Conservation has history on this property, as I've mentioned. We were before them back in I think it was COVID. Was it, John, two thousand twenty? We had the multifamily proposal that we were pursuing.
That was, that was one of the times we've been before them, yes.
So they've got, they, they're very familiar with the site, um, you know, in the, in the delineations. Um, so I don't think it's gonna be a, a major discussion with them on, on the, uh, on the delineation.
Okay.
That's my.
So, yeah, we, we, we don't meet again till the thirteenth. So with that, Chip, I think I'd like to have them ready to discuss architecture, too. We can go through site plan and the conservation stuff. But if we can, if we have time that night, we can take that on as well. If that's all right with members of the board.
That's good with me, Mr. Chair. I just know the neighbor brought up the fact that he thinks that some of the the fact that he thinks that some of the building is within some of these setbacks, if they can confirm that the building is not within any of these setbacks, then I'm fine in talking about the height and the massing and all that, because then we're not moving the building.
We're, we're comfortable with that, we're comfortable with our setbacks, what was mentioned as setbacks are not hard line. The Conservation Commission doesn't have a bylaw, there's no, might be a policy, there's certain things of mitigation that you do to, to work with them on things, so we're, 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 we're comfortable where we are at this point.
But we don't, we haven't seen, Attorney McGrath, we haven't seen a plan that has those, those lines on it from Conservation, have we?
Well, they're on our plan.
Those, those, I didn't see it on tonight when you brought it up. I didn't see the hundred foot and twenty-five foot wetland.
I think they're on that plan, but they're certainly on our notice of intent plan with the Conservation Commission.
Correct, but we didn't get a copy of that.
It is on the plan. You want.
Hold on. We went through sort of the architectural, I think, but not so much the site, I think, right? John, I'll share it, you can talk about it. But I would tend to agree, Chip, if we, if we have, we're ready to talk about Site Civil next time, we usually do that, and then Architecturals can follow, again, whether it's the same meeting or just, what's the team ready to present, and what are we?
I think I missed it on this plan, it's on this one.
Yeah, there's wetland flags here, Chip. And this is the twenty-five foot line that was referred to, see it?
Do you have a cursor somewhere that I'm looking?
Can you see it? Can you see my cursor now, Chip?
Okay, so the W, all right.
Yeah, wetland flags, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's two lines, and one's labeled twenty-five foot, and the other one's labeled a hundred foot. And that would be the buffers from the wetlands.
Right, buff, I, buffer's a good comment, statement rather than setback, because that's, that's a weird, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever, you know, we'd like to, we would respectfully like to discuss architecture, if the board's okay with that, but, because I don't think the town engineer is going to be done with his review for your next meeting.
Yeah, I, I've corresponded with them, they, between vacations and stuff, they, they're up against it, so I'm, I'm not confident. And, you know, I think you should be prepared to discuss it all, and then we'll, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, now seeing those lines that I didn't see before, I'm fine going forward with architecture.
Okay, anything else, board members? Before we close, Sean, and the folks from RJ Kelly, I just looked it up, our next meeting is August thirteenth. So we, if you're going to submit something, we generally like it the Friday before. So if you could submit it to, I saw that Ian emailed the board earlier today, and, and Amy Purcell, who's, who works with us from the building department, so.
And that would be the eighth.
And, and organize your thoughts that way, I think it will be helpful.
Okay. Yes, we'll, we'll do our best for you to hit that target, so, if there's any modifications to this plan in the meantime, as you pursue the process, obviously our opinions may change, so, you know, we'll need time to react, but we'll do our best to hit that, that date for you.
Yeah, we haven't really discussed the project, so I don't see how there'd be any changes for the next meeting, so.
Okay.
With that, looking for a motion to continue to the thirteenth of August.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter to our board's meeting on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Kusumi.
Yes.
And I vote yes, matter's continued, thank you everyone, thanks for the presentation, thanks for the input, we'll see you in August.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Next up, case twenty-six dash four, four Oakland Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's my matter too.
Is it, okay?
Yep.
All you, you can take the screen.
Great, thank you, just going to take me a minute to set up if I could. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath, representing Robert and Jill Bergren, regarding the property at four Oakland Road, they are on the Zoom, Mr. Chair. This is a first application you're receiving as it relates to the new accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So it's a little bit new for all of us, I, I vetted this with the building inspector. On my screen, you can see the Bergren property at four Oakland, and if you would take particular note of their garage, and also kind of the isolated area of Oakland. It, it abuts town property, you can kind of see Crystal Lake down below on Oakland. And I'm also, before I go, so you can kind of see, you come up silver and then Oakland is like a, kind of a, whoops, sorry about that. Is, just kind of a dead end. But also, if you would take note that this tree is no longer here, it's been taken down. They have a very wide driveway that accommodates three or four vehicles, even though they have a garage. And they also have another driveway for their property, right there, which accommodates two more vehicles. So there's, I think, anticipating that could be a question of the board, and the reason I focus on the garage is that's where they are proposing the accessory dwelling unit in the garage. So hopefully that sets the table. So our, our ADU bylaw provides that, it provides that, uh, ADU that is attached to the principal dwelling shall meet the setback requirements for the principal dwelling in the applicable district. And an ADU that is detached from the principal dwelling must meet the setback requirements for the accessory building set forth in one ninety thirty-one C five, which Joe Ward is familiar with, that it has to be in the rear of the property in seven and a half feet, and seven and a half feet, and that's where the issue lies. And also, I should mention with us tonight is Andrew Jones from Phoenix Architects, because they're handling this matter for the Bergens. So now I'm going to, I may share my. So this plan is a little bit different than the one that was submitted, and I will submit it tonight, because this shows the existing garage, and they propose, and you'll see in the architectural plans, to put a little covered porch on the back of it, so what they're going to do is, they're going to go up a little bit on the height of the garage, with, the ADU is going to be completely in the garage, and there's going to be a proposed addition in the back. So, so then we're going to go to the architectural plans, and Andrew, can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Do you want to, do you want to present the architectural, Andrew?
Sure, no problem, I can walk.
Are you to share, or are, are you capable of doing that?
I, I, I can do it, I'll pull up, I can share right now, give me a moment.
Andrew, just for the record, can you identify yourself?
Yep, Andrew Jones, representing Phoenix Architects, and also our clients, Jill and Robert Bergren. Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members, can you see my plan right now?
Yes.
I'll start with the existing plans, just so you get a little better understanding of what Brian was walking you through. Right now, it's just a detached two-car garage, as you can see here, there's a little pull down to a attic loft space up above, so these are the floor plans, garage, second story attic. And then this is just a little overview of the existing elevations, so front two-car garage. Very simple. I will now go to floor plan. What we're proposing to do is, for the most part, for the finished living, we're staying within the existing garage footprint. So you see here, it's roughly twenty-three by twenty-four and a half feet. You know, it, we're, we're trying to do this in a very sustainable way for, you know, creating a three-bedroom unit, so you can see, as, as it is, it's tight, but very functional, in the sense that it's an open concept, living kitchen, bedroom on the first floor, we're showing stairs going up to two other bedrooms up above that are tucked within the roof line, and a bathroom at the end here. What Brian was explaining was that we are also proposing a covered porch off the back, that would be fourteen feet by fourteen feet. And then just as far as elevation goes, this would be the new front elevation, so you can see here how we're keeping the roof plate low to the first floor, with the exception of these dormers for the bedrooms, so one in the front, one in the back, you can start to see this covered porch area in the back. I'm going to just jump to the front two really quickly, we're trying to create a good presence from the street. You know, we're doing a fake garage door that's going to kind of act as a look from the front, so it still feels like it's, you know, a garage or workshop, when really, in fact, we're proposing an ADU for our clients. More than happy to go to any elevation or plan, as you can see the pre-detailed, with the hopes that we'll get approval.
Andrew, if you could just tell the board the total square footage, not including the covered porch?
Absolutely, so I have it written here, on the first floor, we're showing five hundred thirty-two square feet of finished square footage, and you'll see this dashed line which is representing it. And then upstairs, we are showing three hundred sixty finished square feet, so in general, it falls at, I believe, eight hundred and ninety-two, just right under the nine hundred square foot threshold.
So this is a relatively straightforward special permit that we're looking, so what the bylaw provides is, I mentioned that you need to meet those requirements, and under section three F of the bylaw, it provides, an applicant may request relief from limitations set forth in this bylaw, including those regarding gross floor area and setbacks by seeking a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, providing no special permit shall allow more than one ADU on the lot.
Okay. I do have some correspondence from town departments. First one's from DPW. We offer the following recommendations, it's a, it's from the engineering department dated July tenth, we offer the following recommendations if the board approves the project. The applicant may be required to run water and sewer services independently of the principal dwelling for the accessory dwelling. Engineer drawings for all utilities shall be provided for review prior to a building permit approval. Prior to commencing construction or said utilities, the applicant's contractor will be required to fill a right-of-way utility permit with the engineering division and pay all associated fees. The DPW requires that the applicant submit a sewer inflow infiltration INI fee for four hundred fifty dollars. Please submit the INI fee prior to the right-of-way utility permit. So that's DPW. Wakefield Fire Department, letter from Chief Sullivan dated June twenty-six. They have no comments or questions on it. I got an email today, Brian, from Jim Hogan from the planning board. Actually dated yesterday, but I, I didn't see it till today. Says the planning board reviewed the special permit for the proposed ADU, it did not take action as the drawings did not clearly show the proposed ADU, they asked that the ZBA to require more accurate and clear drawings. So what happened there?
I have no idea, I was confused by that, because I, with all due respect to them, I don't think it could be any clearer, it's, you know, it shows the existing garage and what we're proposing.
You showed, you shared these same drawings, because I'm, I'm a little bit.
Yeah, this is, what Amy sends, you know, the packet that you get to them.
Yeah, I, I don't get it, I want to be differential to that board, but I don't see what they don't see.
I don't get it either.
All right.
Maybe they just saw the site plan because it just showed the garage. You know, that's perhaps it, they looked at the site plan and really couldn't figure out where the ADU was, and, and maybe inadvertently didn't realize it was going to be with, you know, part of the garage, but I thought the Architecturalists' book plans kind of, you know, laid that out pretty clearly.
No, I agree, what I saw when I see tonight, I don't, I feel like I'm very comfortable with what's happening here, anyway.
If I could just point out quickly, Mr. Chair, because it's important for the, that the board might want to know, I know, one thing you cannot do is, you know, require, it has to be family oriented, but this is, the Bergren's daughter and her children are going to move into the ADU, so, you know, just for informational purposes. It's not a business.
I'm going to open it up to the board, Dave, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I was wondering when we'd get our first one of these. So I must admit, I, when I first saw the site plan, I was a little confused, I didn't know if this was being in, in the house with the garage, so I, I will admit to a little bit of initial question there, but now seeing the Architecturals and seeing the explanation, I, I get it. But I was, I was questioning that too, so, we'll just need the updated site plan, Brian, you said it's been updated to show that
Yes.
porch on the back, so the one we have is March fifth, so I assumed the other one, you said you'll send to us, what's the date of that one? That, I'll send to you right now, that is dated March, May twenty-second. Okay. Okay. And, yeah, so the total square footage under nine hundred, so the relief you're requesting is because it's that detached garage is four point two feet from the lot line, and it's.
Yeah, and it's in the side, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it's the relief, because it, it needs to meet that accessory structure setback of seven and a half, and it's only four point two, right?
Correct.
Okay, so just for clarity on the relief that is being requested as part of this, okay? And the parking is in front for the people living there?
Yes.
Okay, so the parking is in front, because like, again, outside that half-mile radius of public transportation, I think with the new bylaw, you know, should have at least one, right?
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're within that, we went over that with the building inspector, we meet that requirement, we don't need an extra parking space.
Oh, you're within a half mile?
Yeah, it, it, under this, under the bylaw and the statute, it's how the crow flies, not by the street.
Oh, okay, I know the area, I just didn't.
And bus stops count, so, you know.
Oh, okay.
It, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of areas that, that don't meet that.
Okay, okay. And my only other ask, Andrew, please, make the phone size bigger, my eyes are too old. My goodness, I, I was trying to read these lines, and again, having them electronically helps, we, we just had the paper, right?
You know, we could probably, we could probably scaled it up a little bit, we're used to something bigger, and, and being a small ADU, we usually keep that quarter scale, but I agree, now that I'm looking at it right now, it is a little bit smaller.
Well, you were zooming in, but we just had the paper, and I'd tell you, I can't even read it, I, you know, some of the detailed notes, but, anyway, just an aside. Other, other than that, I mean, it seems like a reasonable ask to me, seems like a tasteful design, meets, meets requirements, just wanted to be clear on the, the ask and the, and the setbacks and the relief, so I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chip, you were next.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Brian, what's your argument that the porch is not included in square footage? It's a covered porch.
Yep.
It's got half walls.
I appreciate the question, let me come up with a creative answer.
Good, good luck on that, so that's my one question, my second question would be, going forward, I'd want to put a condition that if this is a screened porch, it could never become even a three-season porch, because that then bumps your square footage up considerably to almost another third, you know, three hundred, that's almost three hundred square feet, so that bumps up the, the square footage of the total structure. Two, when I first thought about, you know, and I'm going to make some ADU comments, I think this is tastefully done, I don't really have a problem with it, I do, I was one of the largest proponents to making sure that our setbacks for ADUs were the same as another structure, so that somebody couldn't take a garage that was right next to another garage and do this, given that it. Given that it. It's a street. And how it's positioned, I'm, I'm a little bit more okay with this. I, I will say that in the future. Oh, the other thing in the future, on the site plan, I'd like to see where the parking is because parking is part of the requirement. So we don't have any parkings. We don't have. I don't think the site plan actually showed actual parking. You've kind of referenced it. That there's two driveways and whatnot, but I, I don't remember seeing a site plan that actually showed it. So again. In the future, as we do these. I'm gonna really want to know where the parking is for all, for the main house and for the ADU. Uh, because that's a significant part of this whole process. I'm really glad this is as tastefully done as, as Peter and his group and Andrew have done with it because I do. Think it kind of looks like a carriage house out behind the original house. So I think it's cute. I think it works. Um, but the only reason I wouldn't, I'd be in favor of it is because of how. The setback works with the street. If that was at another house. And uh, in more of a neighborhood, I would probably be against it.
Great. So I get an answer, Chip. We're all learning as we go on this.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Just for education for all of us, I guess. So. Uh, there's a definition in the bylaw of gross floor area. It says the sum of the areas of all stories of the building. Of compliant ceiling pursuant to the building code, including basements, lofts. And intermediate floored tiers. Measured from the interior faces of the exterior walls or from the center line of walls separating buildings or dwelling units. But excluding crawl spaces, garage parking areas, attics, enclosed porches in similar spaces. So I would argue that, I have no problem with the condition, uh, but I would argue that the, the porch the way it is is not included. Because it says doesn't, does not include enclosed porches or similar spaces. And this is an open porch.
Well, it's an open porch today.
Yeah.
It could, it can become a enclosed porch in about ten minutes.
Well, if it became, yeah. So if it became enclosed, if it became part of the unit, it wouldn't comply with the nine hundred square feet anyways. So.
Well, that's what I'm so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think Bob and Joe.
Saying, I don't think anybody's trying to do that here. But two years from now, when somebody else owns this property. In about fifteen minutes with nobody even knowing it happened.
Yeah.
That can become part of the square footage.
Yeah, understood. Yep. And then as far as the parking goes, um. Under the statute in our bylaw, um, it says there is zero parking requirements. ADUs constructed on a lot within a half a mile radius of the transit station.
Right, but you haven't shown us any parking.
I know.
There is a parking requirement.
But, 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 but I'm just, I, I, you know, what I'm telling you is, under the state law. If, if the ADU doesn't need to have a parking space. Then it's just not a, you, you, you can't.
I see what you're saying. I don't even, it doesn't even. Where anybody else parks doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, you know, yeah. It's like, you know, the ADU has a deep one.
So let me just say that in the future, if a parking space is required.
Yes.
I will want to see where that is.
Yeah.
And I don't think it hurts. Because you've got a, you know, you're, you're, you're posi-, somebody's coming out and doing a site plan anyway. Put the parking on it.
I understand. I don't disagree.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, again, it's a learning curve.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said, I think this is a great first one.
I mean, I'm not being argumentative. I'll put them on there, but I just want you to know what it is in case.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I didn't think this could have, I didn't see how this could be within the half mile.
I, I, um, and Mr. Chair, uh, I think Amy has it. The, the building department now has a map that shows it. Um.
Yeah.
So, um.
So are we gonna rely on the building department or on your land surveyors?
Well, the building, uh, the building apartment has a map, uh, um, that, that um, shows. The streets and, you know, it, 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 it's color highlighted to show if you're compliant within a bus stop or the commuter rail.
Then maybe, Brian, your presentation should include that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
Right? Here it is. We're within the half mile.
Yep. The map is the size of my room, so it's hard to get it on the screen. It's a huge.
Yep, Chip. This is why, this is gonna be the wild, wild west. Trust me.
So I'm not trying to be argumentative. These are just the things that I'm thinking about.
I, I, I agree. This is why I do. This was gonna be hard for us that. I don't, there's not a lot of room because. If you look at, if you look at where the bus stops are, you'd be surprised where they are. There's almost no part of Wakefield that falls outside that. So the parking thing is gonna be a problem, but whatever.
You know what it is called? It's the far end of Montrose in the upper, upper west side.
That's it.
That's, that's almost it. Everybody else seems to fall.
So Chip, you're safe.
And I think you are probably Mr. Lucy as well.
Anyway, all right, consume it. I see your hand up.
I just have um, one suggestion for Andrew, the um. The windows in the first floor bedroom. I see you have a nice and big window, but I think that window is facing right. To the main house window. Maybe you can change that to um. The smaller window to match like the front and the, the other side.
We need an egress window, so that's the reason for it is we need one egress window, which in the front, we want to keep it a very. As Chip was saying, carriage house look, so.
Can you? Uh, no, so the. Can you make one of the back window? Where the porch is to the egress window?
No, okay, if you look, the bedroom doesn't go all the way to the back. This is the egress window I think you're referring to over here. And once again.
Yeah.
It's the clients, it's a client's family that's gonna be living there. I know they have no intention.
I know, but it's like, I think it's like. Like, straight aligning with the main house window. It's just kind of, it bothers me a little bit. Maybe you can shift it a little bit.
We can see. I'll, I'll run it by the clients, but.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, um. Not hearing from any board members. At this point, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here to? Speak or ask questions about this application? If so, please use the raised hand function and zoom. Small crowd tonight and I'm not seeing any, so. With that, I'm gonna close it to public comment and bring it back to the board. Pleasure of the board.
So board members, to be clear before I contemplate a motion, the only condition I'm hearing potentially is that the. Proposed porch would not become enclosed. And the client's okay with that condition?
Yeah, uh, if I can ask you, Mr. Chair, Bob and Joe, could you unmute? You okay with that? That the, you can't enclose the back porch? Can you unmute on your Zoom?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, yeah, there's not a lot. That I can see, just. We got the, the final plans noted here, the update to the site. The relief requested. Square footage is met. Okay. I'm good unless other board members have other.
Special permit is for twelve hundred feet too.
I'm sorry? I'll take the special permit for twelve hundred feet.
So who, who said that? Was that Jill?
I think it was Susan.
Now, that, that was me that said that, that I was under the assumption that a special permit was up to twelve hundred square feet.
No, if you, if you're nine hundred square feet or less, you, you, you meet different.
For the ADU.
Yeah.
Yes, right. With all due respect, I think you should let your attorney do the talking here.
I don't want to make a mistake, Andrew. I'm right on that, right? That we're under nine hundred square feet.
We are, just right under.
You're eight hundred and ninety-two, if I remember the presentation.
We are.
Well, you know, if you could just belt the suspender and allow the ADU to be built, they're showing on the plan. I mean, that's.
Yep, I would refer to the plans. It just, really, it's.
Just to cover it. That's all. So this is the first one. I don't want to run into a problem with Ben on it.
No, so it'd be the, the two, you know, um. To um. Grant a special permit for the accessory dwelling unit as shown on the plans and I'll try to do the plans.
Yeah.
With the condition that the proposed porch um, is not enclosed. And um, the relief, you know, being that, you know, that the side setback, so.
Yeah, and to the extent it's necessary to square footage in case I run into a problem with Ben, if you could.
As long as it's under nine hundred.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Right, but if, if Ben all of a sudden says it's nine oh five.
No, well, what the, what the statute says is it can be half of the size of the um, of the single-family dwelling. Or nine hundred square feet, whichever is less.
Right.
So, you know, and, and they're confident that they meet that requirement, that their, that their, that half of their um. Square footage of their house will be over nine hundred. If you could just, just allow it to be eight hundred ninety-two square feet as shown on the plan. That's all.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all. All we're gonna, we're all looking to do and then run to make it bigger. What's gonna happen in the future? Ben, Ben is gonna require that people um, actually have an architect certified on the square footage of their house.
Yeah, I would think that it would become a table on your plan.
It's gonna have to become like he's gonna want a certification. And again, everybody's kind of working through this. It's, it's working its way in. Yeah, the Bergmans were very, very quick on this. They were one of the first, so it's kind of like the uh. The test, test uh. Crash test, I should say.
Okay, so if he just tied to the plan, we're good.
It ties to the plan, that's great. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I will move that we um. Grant a special permit for the um. Proposed accessory dwelling unit. At four Oakland Road. Based on the plans presented this evening. From uh, the site plan PJ uh, F and Associates um. Dated March fifth, twenty twenty-five and updated um, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five and the Architectural from Phoenix Architects. Dated May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Um, to allow the accessory drilling unit uh, to be constructed um, in the garage space up to eight hundred ninety-two square feet as. Shown on those plans. And um. Granting relief from the accessory structure setback on the site, which is required to be seven and a half feet and is shown on the plans to be four point two feet. With the condition that the proposed porch cannot become enclosed. At any future time.
Decided.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion?
The only question I have is that Dave referenced that the setback is seven and a half feet. For an ADU, didn't we? In the, the plan, say that it's the normal setback of fifteen feet? Don't, don't we have normal setbacks? Not, not.
But it's a detached structure, so it meets the seven and a half, not the.
Yeah.
If it was attached.
Went, but we increased that during the bylaws, didn't we?
No, you can't, you could do it under the statute. The state won't let you.
When did that happen?
What happened is, if you remember, refresh your memory, the town planner had proposed to allow it to be five feet. And, and at the hearing, you said, no, no, we're not gonna allow it to be closer than an accessory structure would be required to be. Which is seven and a half.
Okay.
But the, but the state law says. You cannot require it to be further back than what you allow for an accessory should be under your bylaw.
Okay.
So, so we, we can't make it more than seven and a half. What they were trying to do, Chip, was make it less than seven and a half. And that's when you put the brakes on and said, no, 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 we're not gonna let you go four feet from a.
Okay, I remember we kept it as, as is.
As is, correct.
Right, and the bylaw. And the bylaw, when it's finally published, we'll have it, but I'm, I'm looking at the town warrant. If it's attached, it should, it should meet the setback requirements of the principal dwelling unit applicable in the zoning district. In which the lot is located, right? So those. Side, front, rear, et cetera. If it's attached, if it's detached, it must meet the setback requirements of an accessory building. Set forth in one ninety thirty-one C. Yep, yep. All right, so that's, back to you, Mr. Chair. That's, we're under discussion, right?
Yeah, we're in the discussion. So any other discussion? Because the motion has been made in second. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Assume me.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt is approved. There's our first ADU. Good luck to the family.
You.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up, other matters. Sixty-five New Salem Street, T-Mobile Northeast LLC Administrative Review. Is there someone here for that matter?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you identify yourself for the uh, record and if you could come off? Put your camera on. It's always nice to see who we're speaking to.
So my name is Adam Wolfrey. I'm the authorized agent for T-Mobile.
So, floor is yours.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Please do.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to get this, pull this up.
It happens.
All right, well, I'm just gonna start. Um, and then. I will um, just share my screen after I. Actually, can my colleague Garrett? Share his screen?
Yeah, anybody here should be able to share the screen. There you go.
Okay, um. So. As I mentioned, my name's Adam Wolfrey. Um. I'm here to discuss T-Mobile's proposed work at sixty-five New Salem Street. So the proposed work. Involves relocating the Alpha Sled. Expanding the two stealth. Containers. Removing three antennas and then replacing them with three new antennas. And then installing three new RRUs. Removing four cabinets and then installing. One new cabinet, one new equipment rack, and then two hybrid cables and removing all the unused cables. And uh, equipment at the cell site. The proposed work, Garrett, can you show the aerial of the existing? Rooftop. Okay, so you can see in upper. The top left corner. That's actually where the. that's actually where the stealth structure is gonna be moved to. You see them in the middle. And if you go to the next page, Garrett, you'll see where it changes to. And that's the biggest difference with the scope of work is moving that uh, stealth structure fifteen feet to the, closer to the edge of the roof. Additionally, as far as like, as far as the equipment area, which is on the first floor, that's in the interior of the building, um, you can't see that from the exterior, obviously. Garrett, can you scroll to the page of the equipment area, please? Yeah, you can see that there's four cabinets on the left. That's the existing conditions. And then on the right, that's what's being proposed. Um, there's not, eh, there's no huge changes with the scope of work. Um, it's a pretty typical upgrade for cell sites and what T-Mobile does. And as I mentioned before, they're removing all the unused equipment at the cell site as, as well. I'm gonna keep, um, the scope of work and summary brief. But that's pretty much what T-Mobile is proposing.
Okay, questions, comments, board members? Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, again, we continue to see these throughout town. Um, seems to meet the requirements of eligible facilities request. You know, looking through the plans, um, pretty straightforward. Just sort of a curious note, the rooftop structural analysis report is dated February twenty twenty-two. Not sure why it's three and a half years old. Uh, was this something that's been in the works for a while, Mr. Wolfrey? And it's from Mr. Greg Shappi, Transcend Wireless. It's just curious that that report's three years old, whereas the plans you're showing are more, much more recent, right? Last September.
Right, I'm, I'll let Garrett, um, answer this one.
Um, yeah, there has been, uh, multiple delays here. Um, one on T-Mobile's side in terms of, uh, pause and work, um, and two, um, delay in, um, lease negotiations with the landlord in terms of, uh, rental increase for the project. Um, that has all been resolved, which is now we're, which is why we're now in front of you. Uh, we do plan to upgrade that structural, um, to, you know, just refresh it. Um, numbers will just be kind of updated and, and dates refreshed. But, uh, that's the reason it was, it's been sold. We have designed this, um, back in twenty-two and are now finally moving forward.
Okay, but that report does reflect what you're proposing.
Correct, yes, yes. Exactly, exactly. There's been no change to the design since the original plan. Other factors have, have slowed it down.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. Um, that was my only observation, Mr. Chair. I just noted the date of that report and found it a little curious, but, uh, other than that.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. This is under the maz. We don't have to take public comment. So just looking, uh, for a motion here from the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the request by, uh, T-Mobile Northeast LLC in accordance with the plans prepared by Centerline Communications, uh, dated um, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, with a rooftop structural analysis dated February eighth, twenty twenty-two, which the applicant has said will be updated and refreshed. Uh, but the information is, is, would still be accurate in that. And for the proposed changes for an existing wireless communication facility at sixty-five New Salem Street Wakefield. And we make this determination that it satisfies the standard for a quote eligible facilities request, unquote, of an existing wireless tower or base station in accordance with section sixty-four oh nine of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Act of two thousand and twelve.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? If you could stop sharing, Garrett, I'd appreciate it. Okay, hearing seeing none. Regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Susumi?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Mr. Wolfrey, I'll have a letter signed for you by Friday down at Wakefield Town Hall in the building department. You can pick it up.
Okay, is there an appeal period with this?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, clerk board comments. Joe, what do you got for us?
Ah, you skipped.
Two hundred Q? Don't we have a?
Oh.
Brian's hanging around.
Brian's not hanging on for my comments, that's for sure. We'll bait it.
Yeah, two hundred, four hundred horsepower request for temporary certificate of occupancy. And as Brian, we go into this, I was down there the other day. I don't know if I mentioned to you. And Joe went through sixty-two Foundry the other day. I'm wondering if we can set up some, um, some field trips for the board. Check out what's happening down at the lake. And, uh, I've heard good things about sixty-two Foundry, even though it's not associated with what's on the agenda tonight. I think folks would like to, uh, I know I'd like to see the building, but if, if we wanna go as a group, we, we're gonna have to advertise it, so. Uh, I'll throw that out to board members to think about while you're going through your two hundred to four hundred, uh, temporary C of O, and then we can discuss that at the end.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, um, on, on two hundred, four hundred, uh, Marissa Gallo is here, uh, on behalf of, uh, the development team. She's been before the board a number of times. And, uh, they are just flying along. They, uh, are seeking a temporary cer- certificate of occupancy uh, for building one, I believe, and Marissa will correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and, uh, because they, uh, are anticipating occupancy August one. Um, so they, you know, as far as the code stuff, they're dealing with the building department, fire department on that, but, um, I don't think, um, I talked to you, Mr. Chair, I think technically, you know, I don't think we need the board's approval for a TC, a temporary certificate of occupancy under the decision. Uh, but there is a reference that, you know, we should update you with landscaping before occupancy, so we wanted to do the safe thing and come before your board, uh, to let you know, um, what's going on, what we're requesting, make sure you're okay with it. In any ways, I think it was an appropriate time to give the board an update of the status of the project. Um, so with that said, I'd, I'd like Marissa to provide you with an update on the status of the project and what they're seeking for a temporary occupancy.
Yep. Thanks, Brian. Um, so thank you, um, for hearing us. So as Brian said, we are expecting move-ins starting on eight one. Um, so far, we've done about twenty-three, um, executed leases, so we're moving along pretty quickly, which is really exciting. Um, we've got a lot of, uh, interest in the building and continuing on tours. As far as building one turnover, um, for TCO, as Brian mentioned, we're working with, um, Wakefield Fire Department as well as, um, the building inspector to satisfy all of our inspections. Um, so far, we've had a few inspections to date and expect, um, the remainder of those to happen at the end of this week by Friday, if not early, um, Monday, Tuesday, the latest next week. Um, and we are also compiling all of our documentation to file with the town. So as far as building one, um, we're well on our way with, uh, completing all the exterior landscaping, um, as well as the lake path in the first phase of work, which will end up being open to the public um, upon the TCO one turnover. Um, up until building two, which is on the farther side of the site, which will, um, be cloned off still for pedestrian access. But as far as the other buildings, building, um, three, which is the larger building, four hundred, Quanapawit, um, we're expecting still to have two separate phase turnovers. Um, one is anticipated for November of twenty twenty-five. Um, and the second phase three for the remaining portion of that building is anticipated for February of twenty twenty-six. Um, building two, which is three hundred Quanapaw on the farther side, side of the site, Lowell Street, um, entrance side, is anticipated for April of twenty twenty-six. Um, it's the last phase of the project. Um, and all of our framing so far on all three buildings is completed and they're well on their way to completing all the siding, um, and windows. Um, if you've been by the site, you've probably seen that they are well on their way for, um, all that work. So, um, I think that is the bulk of the update. Um, we are still looking for, um, a tenant for the restaurant. We do have a lot of um, interest in that commercial space, but have not, um, leased or signed any final leases yet. Um, but anticipate that happening hopefully soon.
And, and Marissa, we will.
Welcome to ZBA tour, right?
Yeah, um, definitely. We can definitely schedule something. Just let us know. Um, it's a great time to go out there. I feel like there's a lot going on, so there's a lot to see.
So great. Thank you. And as Brian and I said, that it's not a hu- thousand percent clear what we need, but I thought the board should get updated and it would wanna know that they're looking for TCO on the first property. I, I really don't have a problem. I don't wanna get in the way, cause it's, uh, there are some affordable units associated with this as well.
Yes, so phase, um, one has twelve affordable units, um, as part of the first turnover. And we're working with Maloney, our affordable consultant, um, and we already have some signed affordable leases, so we anticipate those move-ins on eight one.
Okay.
What's, what's?
Questions, comments?
Yeah.
What's the, um, plan of attack when people do move in? They're just gonna be able to use one access for now, the north Ave side mostly?
Yes, it will be all through North Ave. Um, obviously, the site will still be kind of sectioned off from the construction portion, so we will have site fencing, um, basically surrounding building three, which is the larger four hundred. And then, um, there will be a site fence that basically cuts buildings one and two down the middle to stop access um, through the central road that connects the North Ave and the Lowell Street side of the site. Um, there will be the surface parking, which is open, um, which includes obviously residential parking, but as well as visitor parking that we have allocated to the site, um, which is all surface. And then as part of phase four final turnover is when that loop road will open back up. Um, so that won't be until April of twenty-six.
And when does, what, when does the garage open, Joe? Yeah.
That opens as part of phase two, so that will be over, um, November of twenty twenty-five. This, this winter.
And how soon can we get the big Callahan sign off of that building?
I can make some requests.
I, I don't think they ever had permission to do that.
Yeah.
So I think if you're starting to take occupancy, everybody knows they built it.
Chip, that'll be there till about three years after it's built.
Till, till, till it gets, uh, fringes, fringe on the sides.
It blows into the lake, there'll be hell to pay.
Yeah, Chip, I was gonna say it's up as long as we take a site visit and bring some stuff with us. Some ladders.
Yeah, I mean, that, that sign is, that sign is a little, a little tough. And you know, we had to get them to move all the Callahan signs off the site fencing. And it's about five times the size of even your sign.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll talk to the super and the other, the other team members and see what we can do.
Well, just tell them they don't have permission to have it.
Yeah.
If you want a temporary, eh, just saying.
It'll be gone tomorrow.
Uh, so as far as a site, I'd love to see a site visit. Obviously, I'm the kind of pain in the ass that's not around. So for me, you know, late in the day, five plus would be best for me. And, and also, Tom, just from a PBC standpoint, when we go and view the high school, I believe there's a requirement that if we're looking at progress and construction, that it doesn't have to be, um,
Advertised?
Advertised. Because our site, we do site visits at the high school for the whole board, not just the working group of the PBC, and we don't advertise them. And somewhere, there's a, there's a requir- Joe Bertrand found a requirement that allows us to do it. I can send that to you if you want.
No, cause I think if we make our decision tonight and are not discussing, uh,
We're just viewing, yeah.
Right.
We're not meeting.
I'll double, I'll double check on it, though. I don't wanna run afoul.
You can check with, if I could just insert, Mr. Chair, I mean, you, it's not a, it's not, it's, it's, it's a site for self informational purpose. The project's already approved.
Yeah, there's something, Brian, that, that PBC and Joe found that we don't have to.
Yeah.
For our site visits, we, it's specific about construction and advancement.
I would just run it by town council, so you don't step on it.
I think we did, I think we did that as the PBC. I just can't. You know, there's no lawyer in me, that's for sure.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions on progress? Um, I'll poll the board, try to get, um, a week when people are around. So I know everyone's trying to take some time off in the way, so.
Okay, yeah, just let us know.
All right. So, Brian, are you looking for a vote on that for Benny or?
I think Ben's gonna want something from you, Mr. Chair, that, you know, he's, as you know, he's appropriately conservative with this stuff, uh, does not wanna do anything against the board's wishes. So I think he will probably want something for his file that the board has no issue with the TCO.
Yeah, if, uh, for building one, we'll be very specific. So, w- with that, I'll just ask the board, you'll authorize me to send Ben an email if you guys are all right with that.
You got it.
Any objections?
Nope, nope.
Okay.
I'll get that. I'll move that we, um, the board, uh, request that you, uh, send a letter to the building inspector, supporting our recommendation for a temporary cer- um, certificate of occupancy for building one, as proposed by the applicant this evening. At his discretion, of course, uh, meeting all the other inspections that need to happen, of course, but, um, you know, and as far as this board's concerned, we're recommending that they, they can proceed with a temporary C of O for building one.
They've met our requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, pending a site visit, right? But other than that, we, we, yes.
Yeah.
We've, we've given, we've been given updates and we believe they've met the requirements from this board, yes.
Motion's been made second. I think we can do a voice vote here. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, that is unanimous. I'll get something to Benny, Brian.
Thank you.
Before the end of the week.
Yeah.
If you want to speed it up and write that email for me, it would get the quicker.
I can handle that.
It will be, it will be on your computer at seven oh five tomorrow morning.
It's already there.
It's already, it's already set.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the update. And, uh, we'll get back to you with the date to go down. And, um, Brian, before you leave too, I'm serious about sixty-two Foundry. I've heard some good things about that. I'd like to.
Yeah.
I know I'm curious.
So they haven't. They're, they're, they're planning on having an open house for, uh, town officials. Um,
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can jump into that, you know.
They wanna showcase the, um, they wanna showcase the affordable units. Um, the, the buil- the building, and Joe, I think you'll agree, the building is, is unbelievable.
Yeah, no, it's very, it's very, it's done nicely.
Tight. And, and when you stand in front of that building, Joe, Foundry Street is taking shape.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look down at Harbor Mills, it's what you thought it was. It's just, it's really nice.
Although we, we noticed how, we noticed Harvard Mills is starting to, you know, the, the landscape is starting to fall apart a little bit.
Yeah, and if that's fixed, it'll make a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And part of the road's getting paved and that's good. And I noticed in the paper, I don't know if you know, anyone else gets the item, the real estate transactions, I think four units sold in the end of June for like nine hundred thousand, so good part, all the power to them.
Yeah, they're getting a lot.
But yeah, let us know in the site visit, when that, when an open house is, that'd be great.
Yep. I also know a young person that got one of the affordable units and he's from Wakefield, so it's nice to see that, too.
Great. Nice.
Cool.
All right. Now we go to Joe for clerk board comments.
Yeah, I mean, as Brian mentioned, I met with him a few weeks ago for one ninety-eight Alvion Street and, um, gave my blessing. Uh, I went over that fence. I don't know if you guys remember, we talked about, they want maybe put a, a fence in the back, separating the back, um, driveway and that apartment building are, I think it's, is it a single family or two family? I forget what it was, but they just wanted something to separate that. So, uh, I think we decided on a black picket, not black vinyl, but black aluminum picket fence. For the back there. Uh, everything else looked good. Uh, the outside looked great. There was a coups, a couple of landscape plants were chewed away from the rabbits, but that looked like he had all the landscape in hand. And, uh, he took us to tour. I didn't go inside the building. Me and Brian went to the barber shop. The barber shop was like ninety-eight percent done. I don't know. It, it's been a couple of weeks, so he must be. I don't know if he's moved in there yet, Brian, for the barber shop or what. I didn't talk to him, but it looked like, yeah, not yet, yeah. But, you know, that, that building came out great. Um, so, as did he. So, is, did he get his, is he all set over there?
He did. It looks like it's been there forever. It's unbelievable. I mean, compared to the one.
You should give me the okay. I sent it something to Benny saying that we met the thing.
Yeah, and then last week I looked at Foundry Street. We, that's, that one, me and Brian, we took a tour. We went into three or four apartments. Um, a couple on the first, well, second floor and one on the, the top floor, um. You know, the views of the, of, uh, the heist, of, of the big Alvin, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, the pub, the amenity areas are phenomenal.
Amenity, yeah, has a small little gym on the first floor, plenty of parking, um. Yeah, it was great. Yeah. Good looking building.
A note on that, Joe, too, that, you know, and kudos to D V I S I because the affordable units, he, they have all the top of the line fixtures like all the units.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the only, I, I mentioned this to you, uh, I texted you Tom, is that the only thing that was missing was some of the lighting at the front, uh, that the town still owes them. Um, some of the sidewalk lights, uh, poles. Other than that, everything else was, uh, up to stuff. So.
Yeah, and Brian, based on Joe's comment on Harvard Mills, can you send a note to your, I don't know if they're still your client or you have communication with them, the, about the landscaping there?
I could try, you know, they change. I, I think, um, yeah, I'll try to get in touch with the management at the building. Yeah, what it is, it's the Maple Street parking lot that, you know, and it, it will make a huge difference. I'm, I'm admitting it, they'll make a huge difference in that area because the D V I S I landscaping is meticulous. In the Harvard Mills landscaping, um, along Foundry Street is beautiful, too. It's kind of just in that parking lot area that's gotten a little bit weedy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like request that um, something that dropped off the plate a while ago is Joe and I were trying to get to look at, um, so there's vents at the new gas station at Four Corners that were never on the plan. Um, so I would like to what do you think the best way to handle that is, Brian? Cuz half those people are gone, too.
Think you need to just, uh, Tom, you can send me an email, and that way it kind of gives me a avenue in. Maybe just send me an email on both of those, Tom, on Harvard Mills and on Noria, if you could.
Yep, will do.
Where's the fence, Chip? Sorry?
No, the vents.
The vents.
The vents, the twenty-foot vents in the front of the building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That were never on the site plan.
I don't even notice them anymore. It's been so long.
I, I was hoping to put a flag on them, Joe.
Yeah.
You know, and that might be the answer, but I'd like to just ask them if they could be lowered, if anything.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I, I've now gone and looked at vents on all these parking lots, and everybody has them. They're just a lot more discreet in many of the places, people's places.
Yeah, they should have put them around the back or something. That lots of a lot.
Somewhere. But, but they could be, they could be lower. We don't have thirty-foot snows anymore.
All right. Anything else, folks?
Nope.
Meeting minutes.
Yep. We got both, uh, meeting minutes from June, and we need to approve the executive session meetings from, uh, the fourth and the twenty-fifth separately as well.
Right, so we have four, four different documents from Amy's, right? So I know the June fourth open session was just basically opening and going into executive, but I assume we wanna vote on each of them separately, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we, uh, approve the meeting minutes of our open session of June fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made second, and this is voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, move. No, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
I move that we accept, um, uh, approve the meeting minutes of our executive session on June fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Nope, okay.
Mr. Chair, move that we, um, approve the meeting minutes, um, open session of June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No. Last one.
Mr. Chair, move that we approve the executive session meeting minutes of our June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Nope. So, that's great. Thank you, thank you, Amy. Um, I did hear from Greg. I didn't hear from Mitt. So I don't know if something happened or I missed an email or something, so we hope he's okay. Um, did you hear anything, Amy? Okay.
No, I didn't receive any emails.
Okay. All right, I'll, maybe I'll reach out and make sure he's all right, because I see him on your emails, Amy, so I know he gets all the material.
Yep.
All right. With that.
Motion's been made, Mr. Chair. Yep, always in order.
All right.
See you in August.
See you in August, thank you.
All right, see you in a month.
Good night.
Good night.